To call a special meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for June 22, 2016 to order. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
There are nine present and three absent.
Okay, let the record show the Commissioners Purdue Dolan, Commissioner Soreich, and Commissioner Ralph are excused this evening. Commissioner Anderson, can you lead us in a prayer and a pledge?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night. We make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people who live here, for their chance, one nation, united in God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there is no public comment for the special meeting. We'll allow that during the committee meeting to follow shortly after here. So we'll move into Section 1, Communication 16-294, Leslie Clark with the Human Resources Department requesting counsel to concur with and authorize the Chief Executive to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the city and county of Butte Silver Bow and the ATU AFL-CIO Local Union 381. Ms. Clark?
Good evening, Mr. Chief Executive, Madam Secretary. Madam, what are you, Chairperson? And council members? Yeah. My name is Leslie Clark, and I'm the Director of Human Resources for Butte Silver Bow, and we request your concurrence tonight and allow Mr. Chief Executive Matt Vincent to sign the contract between Butte Silver Bow and the ATU Union of the AFL-CIO.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Director Clark? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This time I move to concur with Communication 16-294 and place on file.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to concur and place on file. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication 16-295, Leslie Clark, Director of Human Resources Department requesting counsel concur with and authorize the Chief Executive to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the city and county and the Montana Nurses Association. Leslie?
I'm here this evening to request your approval or concurrence to allow Chief Executive Matt Vincent to sign the contract between the city and county of Butte Silver Bow and the Montana Nurses Association.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to concur with Communication 16-295 and place this on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to concur and place on file. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Communication number 16-296, LeAnn Whitworth, Montana Golden Gloves of 1101 Utah in Butte requesting counsel authorize street closures on July 3 in conjunction with the Montana Golden Gloves Boxing Ring event featuring head trainer and professional heavyweight Eric Hempstead. I think this is a result of us having one extra weekend in, or one extra week in June and missing that final meeting to get it in before the actual event. So I know she's been working with Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Lazar to get these things taken care of. So Ms. Whitworth?
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight, Chief Executive Vincent, Madam Chairperson, Council of Commissioners. Did you receive my correspondence, or shall I read?
It was received, Ms. Whitworth.
Yes. Would you like me to read it, or?
I don't think so. If there's anything in addition to your correspondence that you'd like to state, now would be the time. And then if there's any questions from the commission members, we'll fire away. We should be good, so.
I'm basically requesting a street closure for the intersection of South Wyoming and Galena on the evening of July 3. This would be a barricade placed between Arizona and Main Street to through traffic and Mercury to Park, also to through traffic, from 12:00 till 11:00 p.m. on July 3.
Very good. And you want to tell us, tell our council members anything about Mr. Hempstead? I know he's got a 3-0 record in the professional ranks, so it's pretty cool that he's getting able to fight here in front of his adopted home crowd.
Yeah, so he's from Anaconda, and so he's looking for a home crowd that's bigger than Anaconda. And he's been traveling on the road, and so now we believe that he will be our home, our newest hometown hero and athlete from Butte. We know that he's been training down in Las Vegas with BJ Flores, and he hopes to someday contend as the heavyweight champion of the world. That is certainly our hope, and we want to welcome him home. He decided to come home just to box that weekend. So I'd love it if we could get a bigger crowd. We have some places to put him, but if we could get the largest crowd that we can, which would mean the intersection, that would be great for him and for us.
Sure. Any questions for LeAnn? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, LeAnn. And these things are always fun. Is JP out in the audience? I thought, yeah. Could I just ask JP a quick question? And I'm really treading on someone else's district, probably Bill Anderson's. Are there any conflicts with, you know, businesses or residents or anything like that to have this closed between 12:00 noon and 11:00 p.m.?
For the record, I'm JP Gallagher, Parks and Rec Director, Chief Executive Vincent, Chairperson Shaw. We have not had any conflicts. You know, who this will impact the most would be stacks, auto parts, and it is really outside of the business hours. Of course, it'll be a busy night in Butte, so that that will be, you know, in consideration. But with stacks has ran an event before, they have an understanding, they're working closely with LeAnn to promote this fight.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Anderson, followed by Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. The one thing I was concerned about this is on the 3rd of July, there is a tremendous amount, larger volume of traffic on the roads, especially in the uptown with people going through the park and everything, and anything with emergency vehicles. Is that something that was taken into consideration? I'm sure that everyone signed off on this, but there wasn't any foreseen problems or anything with that?
If I can. Through the chair, too, Commissioner Anderson, we did speak with the fire department, and they gave us certain requirements that we need to use and barricades so that they could move them easily if they needed emergency access. Also, the police and Sheriff Lester just definitely lined us up on exactly what we need to do for that. And we believe because it's a secondary intersection that it won't be as much of a problem because it's not a thoroughfare.
Perfect.
Commissioner Morgan?
You stole my thunder.
Any more thunder out there? Seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I see all approvals have been received. So at this time, I would move to concur with Communication 16-296 and place it on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's nothing further on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, LeAnn.
With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Meeting adjourned.
Laura, let us know when you're ready, and we'll re- Also?
Um, yeah.
Everyone, please check in.
Evening, everyone. You already know you're at the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Committee, the whole meeting, June 22. Could I have a roll call, please?
There are eight present, one presiding, and three absent.
Let the record show again that Commissioners Soreich, Purdue Dolan, and Ralph are excused. At this time, we have a portion of our meeting where we ask for any public comment on any items that are on tonight's agenda. And of course, we'll have a public hearing on the other two items that are before us tonight. But this is just for anything in general that might be on your mind that's on tonight's agenda. Okay, I don't see any, so I'll forego the report of the chair. We got kind of a full, full agenda tonight, and it's kind of warm up here. So welcome to the courthouse. Section 1, Public Hearing, Communication number 16-248, Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, requesting counsel of commissioners authorize a public hearing on June 22, 2016 regarding the developer packet proposals for three city-county owned properties. And I would ask County Attorney Joyce if we have public, if we have property.
Madam Chair, there is proof of publication for both, and they both appear to be in order.
Okay, thank you very much. Lori? Dory, excuse me. Lori, Dory. Lori with a D. Dory.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Dory Skirker. I'm the Community Development Coordinator. We're here this evening to take public comment on applications for the purchase of publicly owned property. I would note that in the legal ad, because we didn't know this at the time, we did not receive any proposals for 102 East Second Street. So the applicants that, applications before you are for 68 Missoula Avenue and 57 West Broadway Street. We did receive seven applications for the residence at 68 Missoula Avenue. This is a cottage up on the hill, and we've got some folks that are willing to take this on. They've met the minimum requirements and did make oral presentations to the developers, Developers Packet Review Committee last week, last Wednesday. And there were representatives of Public Works, Community Enrichment, Historic Preservation, Planning, and Community Development present for those presentations. And all, all the applicants made presentations. I had Tracy send you the, a little cover memo on, on this. So you have the description of these folks' applications. Primarily, they are for residential purposes and residential purposes either for rent or for themselves, or for children, offspring, those kinds of things. And everyone appears to meet the measure and qualifications to be awarded this property. With respect to 57 West Broadway Street, you might be familiar with that. It is, still has the barber pole up. That was an early, early building, 1884. It's actually two buildings put together, and it has an amazing myriad of floors. And it was originally constructed for office space and boarding. And we have four applicants. We received four applicants that met the minimum qualifications within their proposals. The purpose of the public hearing this evening is to take public comment, comment on any and all applicants. I don't know, Madam Chairman, if you'd like to just ask for one address and then the second, perhaps start with 68 Missoula Avenue for comments on those applicants.
Okay.
So we don't mix them up here. So, because I, I have, I have to tell you, and it is a hot night, but I like you to see who is vying for these properties. And I think it's important that we are all involved in this process. So I've asked them to keep it short and sweet, to introduce themselves and let you know what they intend to do with the property. So I appreciate your patience with this, and they've all worked really hard to get to this place. Thank you.
So County Attorney Joyce, I was just curious, we normally ask for proponents and opponents, but would I just open it up to public comment? Is that, I mean, I can still follow the protocol that we normally do.
Madam Chair, if you want to split, I mean, if you want to just mention a property and ask for proponents for that and opponents for that, and then do it for the next.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions for staff before we begin the public hearing? Seeing none? Open up a public hearing, and I'll call for proponents. This is for 68 Missoula Avenue. Anybody like to speak on the 68 Missoula Avenue? All right. Just come to the microphone and give me your, your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is John Coontz. I'm the 120 Rev. Drive in Bozeman, Montana. And I'm interested in this property. I was already planning on moving to Butte anyway, and buying an old house and fixing it up, but I just find that neat. And this one actually has quite neat history. I want to return the porch back to its original way it should have been, and I want to put all the siding on the house to the pine siding like it originally should have had, including the add-ons, so it looks like it was meant to look the way it is. I also want to redo the inside to kind of match the era that the house was built. Of course, the kitchen will be new, but I, in my mind, it needs to have inset cabinets and stuff like that that would have been common at that type of time of the era. I did notice that in the paper, it said that my total willing to spend was 28,75. That was simply the budget of what I calculated the cost of supplies to be. I'm actually willing to spend $50,000 to $60,000 if I need to. I've done this for a living. I'm very good at it. I have references if you'd like them. The house also has some really neat history. I learned that Frankincilla Harper, and he was the undersheriff up there, lived in that house originally, and the last resident was Bob Harper. That's kind of neat to know that that house was kind of important to that community, and I'd like to keep it, you know, the way it should be. Main focus on this property, I know you guys want it to be not an eyesore. I want to immediately do the outside and the yard so that by the time the snow flies, it's no longer an eyesore for the city of Butte.
Thank you, John.
Thanks. Any questions?
Proponents? No, it's just a public hearing. No dialogue. Proponents for 68 Missoula Avenue? Just come to the microphone and give me your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, this is Tony Thimmer, my husband. I'm Susan Thomas. I want to thank you for all your time tonight. Pretty much the same thing. We're going to put the house to its original state as far as the porch is concerned. We, too, were thinking to do the outside and have it looking good again before the snow comes. The time is not a problem. We can do that. He does that for a living. He's been doing it for 35 years. We have a couple we've done here in Butte already. And we, too, like, you know, bringing back the old houses and renovating. They're great projects. I have my youngest daughter, she's 22. She had a baby. He was the January 1st baby of Butte, St. James. But, you know, we'd like her to have a little equity, roof overhead, you know. We'd like to maintain the original look. That's what we're doing with the house right now. And we do a real good job. It seems like the officers and the authority of Butte seem to be okay with our, or were very okay. What would you like that?
Nothing, really. You said it all.
But again, you know, we're down for 35. But he's a master at what he does. So, you know, that's just materials. You know darn well, we'll put more in if we have to. But it will be finished, and it will be finished well. And we'd really like to have it. It's a great project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good call for proponents for 68 Missoula Avenue?
Good evening, Commission. Larry Hunter. I suspect you already know. My wife Elaine, and we are also interested in 68 Missoula. In our plan, it sounds a lot like the others, but we're going to try to keep it as original as possible, try to restore everything we can. Our initial plan, if you've read our proposal, is to do the wiring, plumbing first, and make it livable. Our son will live there, and then we'll continue on with the restoration through the winter. But wiring, plumbing, roof are all in need of immediate attention, and then we'll continue on from there, try to make this as original as it was, if we can. For the record, we live in a house that, well, part of it is, was a smaller house from West Granite, from built in 1917 that we moved to divide, that we've redone. So nothing new. Rewired, bombed, and obviously deal with the structural issues as well. Those of you have known that. See no problem. I think our estimate was roughly $40,000 to put into it. I don't know if that's going to be it or not, but in that ballpark over the next year. So, questions?
No dialogue this public hearing.
We have two sons that are, they work graveyards. One's a janitor at Tech, and one is working for Butte Produce. And they'll both be contributing with the sweat equity. They're 21 and 26, so they're strong.
Young, nice.
And enthusiastic about this because as blue collar workers, which Butte was based on, which it still is, minimum wage jobs, it's hard to get that equity like our, the past people were explaining about their daughter. It's just really difficult to start off on your own. I think this would give them both a chance to get going. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Larry and Elaine. Continuing on with proponents for 68 Missoula Avenue. Any other people that would like to speak on that? Give me your name, names and addresses for the record.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jason Kusin. My fiancee Jeanette. We're looking at 68 Missoula Street, too. We are actually going to try to get into there sooner than everybody. We have all the support we need. Can't really give you, yeah, and more, can't really give you an estimate until we get everything torn out. I've done it for 15 to 20 years, and everybody in my family and her family's done. So the labor isn't anything. Materials are cheap if you know what you're doing. But we are trying to make it a home instead of renting it out or doing anything. It'll be our home. She's lived up on 51 Missoula Street when they were younger. We have six kids, so.
So we made it. And yeah, it's not an experience.
Oh, I've been working on a new construction for many years.
And my dad, JP.
JP.
For how long?
29.
29.
Remodeling. Most of my family's been in it.
So we have more than enough help.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Any further proponents for 68 Missoula Avenue?
My goodness.
She brought a blue and gold baby. As a bra.
Could I have your name and address for the record, please?
Samantha Halverson, 1304 Adams Avenue, here in town.
Thank you.
And we're going to take that house on 68 Missoula Avenue and turn it into a family home for me and my husband and our three kids. We're going to, of course, start with the outside and get rid of all the eyesores that are out there, and then we're going to go on the inside and completely remodel the whole entire inside. The outside, we're going to leave intact as historical as we can, and redo that whole outside with the original stuff. But the inside's going to be a whole new house.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of 68 Missoula Avenue? I think that's the last call for proponents. Any opponents for 68 Missoula Avenue? First call. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for opponents for 68 Missoula Avenue, and we will close that portion of the, of the public hearing. Now we're on to 57 West Broadway Street. And we'll do the same routine, laws for proponents for 57 West Broadway. Anybody that care to speak on behalf of that, please come to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Don Andrews.
I'm Brian Boyd. We represent Cobalite Studios. And we, we plan on putting a film studio in after all the renovations done. We plan on hitting the front of the building first, you know, do the outside while you can in the good months. And we have a little bit of repairs on the roof that we need to hit up. Then it's cleaning the storefronts out and getting them ready to be rentable spaces. And then redoing the second floor into apartments. We'll be redoing the plumbing and electrical. I used to do, well, I worked as a building engineer out in Portland, and I would green commercial and industrial buildings. So I do have a lot of experience doing this. I also did power and ECS systems for nuclear missile silos and launch control facilities. So I have a, I have a lot of background in, in doing facility work, especially in commercial and industrial settings. And, yeah, we already have, have cosigners on loans if we do need the cosigners. We have a couple other investors that are, are already down, and we also have furniture already.
Yeah.
So.
Got a truckload of stuff to bring in.
Yeah. And we have scheduled about 30 weeks of work to get everything to where we need to start working projects, having tenants downstairs and renters in the second floor, and working on animation, editing, and production on the third floor. So we have projects that, that could be here as soon as October and November.
Yeah.
But we're, we're really looking at next, late May to, to really start going on in that building. Yes. Are there any, any questions or anything?
There's no dialogue. It's a public hearing. But thank you very much for coming up, Don and Brian. Okay, another call for proponents on this 57 West Broadway Street, sir. Your name and address for the record, please?
John Markham, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Good evening. And to borrow a famous quote, I had a dream to restore that Broadway Street facade to as close to original, but also to incorporate with the blessing of the Historical Preservation Officer and Department. The newer copper roofing that has been seen going up around town, the flat black paint like on the Taco Del, or Taco Del Sol, the architectural corrugated metal, I mean, to make the little roofing and stuff. Again, nothing was discussed. But I didn't get with the URA lady caring for any kind of a funding. And Mr. Thatcher expressed interest in possibly leasing it for a, he needs a drug testing lab. But he's been in, out of town for the last week or so. But we did speak, so regrettably, I'm going to have to retract my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Proponents, 57 West Broadway?
Good evening, Commissioners. What we propose to do to the building is bring it back and make it into offices. And, you know, for our personal use, you know, we would use some of the offices as well and expand our business. And then in, if we were granted it, my parents have also thought about doing, opening up a second store if we were granted. You have anything else? By the way, my name is Raul Shirley Sanmaniego.
102 East Center. I think you asked for the address. Our primary interest is that, you know, we've, we currently have three businesses that we operate, and we're licensed through the city and for our home office, and we just were bursting at the seams. So our intent is to refurbish the building and, you know, and get those businesses moved, relocated as soon as possible to the location.
And also give other people opportunity, small business, you know, because we've looked into trying to open a business here and a business office and, you know, you know, one of the main corridors, and it's kind of expensive. So, you know, we were allowed, we would give other people the opportunity at a lower rate to start more businesses here in Butte.
And he has, as we outlined in our proposal, he does have the experience to get the work done. The dollars that are showing on this list are materials only, doesn't include any, any of the sweat equity. He would do the majority of the work. And also give other people opportunity, small business, you know, because we've looked into trying to open a business here and a business office and, you know, you know, one of the main corridors and it's kind of expensive. So, you know, we were allowed, we would give other people the opportunity at a lower rate to start more businesses here in Butte.
And he has, as we outlined in our proposal, he does have the experience to get the work done. The dollars that are showing on this list are materials only. Doesn't include any, any of the sweat equity. He would do the majority of the work. So, we hope we get it so we can expand our businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raul Shirley. Again, I'll call for proponents for fifty-seven West Broadway Street. Is there any other proponents? Give me your name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Metcalf, nineteen fourteen Grand. Jessica Ingram, twenty-five oh six Parachute. Thank you. Our proposal is to turn two of the storefronts into a one salon barber shop and then rent one storefront out. And then we want to, with the second floor, have our offices and storage. And then third floor used as affordable housing for future cosmetology students. Give them a better opportunity and not have all that extra burden when they're trying to go to school. A lot of cosmetology students are single moms, so it helps them financially with all that. We figure with the three storefronts, we could have finished between six and twelve months. Third floor, we want to do all new water lines and electricity. Probably twelve to eighteen months on that. But we would start with the outside, probably keep the exterior intact as much as possible. New roof, definitely redo the windows, keep those as the double hung windows. We have our Glacier Bank interested, we have our loan, and we have talked to the Butte Development Center also for funding.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Last call for proponents for fifty-seven West Broadway?
Hi there, Commissioners. Chairwoman Shaw and Chief Executive. I, I hope it's my turn to speak. I wanted to speak in favor of Mr. Boyd and Mr. Andrews's project.
Could I have your name and address for the record? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, my name is Elizabeth Cox.
Okay. Your address?
My address is two eight oh nine State Street.
Thank you.
They are incredibly organized and hardworking and dependable and trustworthy. They have taken on projects. I've seen them work as laborers for other people since they've been here and done amazing, amazing things with abatement and restoration and repair of several different properties of town. They've also been there for me and for other filmmakers and artists when we needed support. And they are professional. They know what they're doing. And I really can't say enough kind things about them. They are truly exceptional people, extremely hardworking and, and very good guys. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Okay, last final call. Any proponents for fifty-seven West Broadway? Now, I will ask for opponents. First call for opponents. Second call for opponents. Third and final call for opponents. Close the public hearing. And I just want to thank everyone for coming here today. It's wonderful to see so many applicants for these buildings. If you, for some reason you don't get it, we really hope that you just go for something else because there's always plenty of opportunities coming up. And we really appreciate your coming out to put yourself out here to apply. So, thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. Okay, moving along to the second public hearing. This is Communication sixteen dash two six one. Karen Burns, Director Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting Council Commissioners authorize a community development block grant, a CDBG community needs public hearing on June twenty-second. Ms. Burns, welcome back.
Thank you very much. Chairman Shaw, members of the council. I'm here tonight to hold a public hearing that is required by the community development block grant program under the Montana Department of Commerce. If we want to apply for funds through their CDBG program, we need to hold a community needs public hearing, which talks about our overall community needs that could be addressed through the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program. And so, tonight we're holding that hearing to talk about the program in general and the kinds of projects that can be funded by it. And then ask for, it's not a proponent or opponent thing. It's a public comment about what kind of projects we'd like to see forwarded in our community. So, just really quickly, I'm required to give an overview about the community development block grant program. There are entitlement and non-entitlement communities in Butte Silver, in Montana. The entitlement communities are folks that don't have to compete for their funds, and that's Billings, Great Falls and Missoula. They have populations that exceed the, the amount of population that you need to have to compete. Butte Silver Bow falls under that, obviously, so we do have to compete for our funds. The one thing that is mandatory, that all of our projects have to document, a fifty-one percent of grant funds will be used to support low to moderate income people. So, that is one thing that we measure that we do have to meet. And so, when you're talking about projects that may be helped with this program, you have to understand the population that you're directing the funds to. And so, we have a couple of projects, or I know of one project for sure, that we are looking at assistance for, and that is for the Greeley Neighborhood Stormwater Replacements Infrastructure Project. And so, that project, we are undergoing right now an income survey in the area to document that low to moderate income need. And then we will also be pursuing other funding sources to complete a first phase of that project, which will come in at around four hundred thousand dollars for, for Phase One. We've been working on this project for a couple of years and it is something that's going to take a lot of effort to get the stormwater infrastructure put into place. But that is one project that we are working on. So, we will be having a second public meeting regarding that project to allow us to apply for these funds. But tonight is overall community needs, and I took my opportunity to talk about one community need that I know, do know of. And so, anyone else who's interested could, could chime in.
Any questions for staff and Council Commissioner Palmer?
It's not really a question, but Karen, as you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done up in Centerville on the retaining walls and the infrastructure leading into, from Main Street up to the Mountain Con Park. So, I think that would be a good use of the money if we could direct some of these dollars up in that area, so.
Thank you, Mr., Ms. Commissioner Palmer. I agree.
Any other questions for Karen? Opened up a public hearing. For anybody that care to speak, whether it's be on behalf or against proposals here?
Good evening. I'm Karen Sullivan, Health Officer for Butte Silver Bow. I'm here this evening representing the Butte Silver Bow Continuum of Care Committee and specifically the Planning Committee of that, the Planning Subcommittee of that committee. We focus on homeless issues in Butte Silver Bow. Have all kinds of efforts related to that issue. And I'm here to represent the thought from the Continuum of Care Committee and the Planning Subcommittee that an alternative emergency homeless shelter is greatly needed in our community. And I forward that as a prospect for future reference for this project and these funds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Mr. Baneran?
All right, Baneran, twenty-six oh one Grand Avenue. I just want to make a general comment. The neighborhoods depend on these kind of grants to improve their neighborhoods. I'd like to thank Karen for all her work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Any other comments?
Lucky people to see me again. I'm Mary Carol Wolman. I represent Centerville from one twenty eighty Center. I'd like to thank you all for all the work that you do here in Butte. Otherwise, a lot of things wouldn't be done. I'm glad, I'm not a commissioner because I think I would be a closet drinker by now. So, and maybe yous are getting that way, and I'm probably part of getting you there. What I would like to do is, I have some pictures here. I'd show you some of the project that needs to be done in Centerville. If someone would look at these, this would be awesome. I'll show you the problems that we are having, and we would really appreciate all the help that you can. We have some money allocated, I think that's the word I'm needing, already, but we need more to finish this project. And these are, if I may show you these pictures. These are the retaining walls that we're trying to get, and these are kind of, you can just look for however. So, your money would be more than well spent. And we appreciate everything that you do. And again, like I said, we need the money up there. We're willing to do what it takes for us to get it up there. If I have to bottle that wine and bring it to the closet, I'll be glad to. And we are having a meeting tomorrow night, so you guys are all welcome to come to Centerville Fire Hall Meeting at seven o'clock tomorrow. And you may walk Center Street if you like, and we can show you all the project because that's what we need. Pack a lunch because I got lots of things I could tell you. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other further comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Karen. Moving on to Section Three, this is a presentation, Communication sixteen dash two eight three. Pat Holland, Manager Butte Silver Bow Government Buildings, requesting Council Commissioners authorize a presentation on June twenty-second this evening regarding the courthouse west retaining wall and driveway restorations.
Chair Shaw, members of the commissioners, thank you for your time. Tonight, I wanted to update you on the courthouse retaining wall and tell you where we're at on this project and the options for its repair. Kind of hard to see in this light, but this is the wall and, and most of you are familiar with the deterioration of it, where the aggregate is showing there below the first, that cap is actually an add-on later years. I don't know what year it was. But in order to get this done right, it's one of those projects that is ending up to be, I'm glad I didn't do it the way we wanted to do it the first time. So, with that, we'll continue the slides. Here is the deck below it where the sidewalk enters the west side of the courthouse. And here's another picture of that slide, and you can see that it is unsafe and, and cannot be used. In the future progression of the plan is, we have some very big issues going on in the courthouse steps and the stoop out in front. In order to address most of those issues, we're going to have to have this completed and then take those steps out and redo them. Temporarily, we will be cementing the top of the stoop out there for safety purposes until that time. Go ahead and move on to the next. In our projected budget, we were given three hundred thousand dollars, and that was to include the design and construction. And when we went out, when I went out for the estimate, the design alone could cost up to a hundred thousand dollars, even only two hundred thousand for that construction. One thing to keep in mind is that Pioneer Equipment was retained to, to do this estimation. And in that estimation, there was a Plan A and Plan B. Plan A was simply to replace the wall as is as a cement structure and leave it go with that, which would cost substantially less than that one hundred thousand. The thought was, if we were to open up that wall, we're going to have to open it up on the sidewalk side, which puts us right next to the utilities, the stormwater, that Dave is going to present some slides on next. But there are some anomalies that we may face going into that construction, especially with the amount of money given to do this project is just simply not enough. Pioneer did not come back with a price yet because they're not sure of what it's going to take to open that up. As we go on, we may find other things in that wall. I'll let Dave go ahead with the next couple of slides.
So, it is very hard to make this slide out, but I think I can describe what's on this pretty well. So, we all, we all know the existing walls just outside this wall of the courthouse. And the thought is that Public Works can very likely design and replace this wall. We think that the, the skills needed to excavate this and to put back a, a retaining wall are well within our, our wheelhouse. And so, our proposal is that we will undertake the design effort, and we should know within the next month or so whether or not there are some technical aspects of this that are maybe something more than we would want to tackle. Our expectation is that this is something we can successfully do. We propose tackling this project after the paving season, so sometime around October first, and try to have it complete well before Christmas time. And the, the red line you can see, the, the proposal would be to widen out that deck area that's adjacent to the courthouse on the west side. It gets pretty narrow as you walk toward the back, as you walk north, about opposite where Karen Burns' office is, it gets pretty narrow. So, we could widen that deck area out and, and push that wall out into what is now Montana Street. Now, a, as we know, Montana is a four-lane street adjacent to the courthouse here, but becomes two-lane just above the courthouse as you go past the jail. So, under this concept, we would have Montana Street become a one, one lane each-way street into two-way street at Granite Street. We'd move the wall out into about where the parking lane is now. And then we would widen that deck area out, and then that could be used by the public while Pat has the front steps and the stoop rebuilt. But then, long-term, that wider, larger area, deck area on the west side, we could put tables there. We could have a, a seating area for the public and for courthouse employees. It could be kind of a, a nice addition to the amenities of the courthouse. The, the arrows in the text boxes that you can't read, what they discuss is that there is a water main that runs on Montana Street adjacent to the courthouse. We'll have to either relocate or abandon it. It provides water to only two locations, and that is the old Dugan Dol and Mortuary and also the, the apartment block to the south. So, we could look at alternative ways to feed water to them or else replace the main at a location further to the west. So, the next slide, Pat. One more time. It's not changing, is it? This is not changing the vice, man. Must have rolled the wheel. Don, show them how to do this, will you? Let someone do it, Morgan. Evan, Morgan, the rescue. One more, yeah, okay. Okay, that, thank you, Commissioner Morgan. So, the, the style of wall that we would propose, and, you know, this is definitely an, an early draft of the concept, it would be a cobblestone-style wall like you see here. And these are concrete retaining wall blocks that are, sound, look like cobblestone. But we, and if you go to the, the next slide, Pat, and maybe one more, please. We would propose to do it in a concept like you see here. You can see the courthouse on the right and then that deck area between it and the retaining wall. We could do it in two levels, and then we could have an intermediate level that could have some planting to kind of soften the effect of the wall. And then just imagine that that wall would be cobblestones. And then the sidewalk that you see there in the parking lane all get moved about ten feet to the west of where they are now. So, our intent is to flesh out this design, see if this concept is sound, and then we'll, excuse me, we'll likely be making a further presentation to you folks once we have some better facts and figures for you. That's it.
Thank you, Pat. And Steve? Any questions from council members? Morgan? Thank you, Madam Chair.
How did we get that retaining wall there to begin with?
Yes, Commissioner Morgan, it has always been that way since its inception. And to my knowledge, it is the original wall, other than possibly the cap, but it's supposed to be.
Any other questions for either Dave or Pat? I was going to ask, you know, if we do the design work ourselves, are we going to be within our parameters, the original $300,000?
We think so. We, we're early in the stages of looking at this, and so we may find some technical detail that blows the budget. But right now, we've looked at it somewhat closely, and we think we can get this thing done within the budget that you folks have allocated.
And that would include the waterline replacement and/or relocation?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Anderson?
Just on a side note, has anybody called Donald Trump about building the wall?
Jeez.
You're not getting your name on it.
Always somebody. There's always someone. Well, this is in my district, and I am thrilled that this is being done. It's, it's, every time I sit in Karen's office, I look out there, and I'm like, oh, my goodness. Wouldn't take much for her to be underground. Even further. Yeah, it's great. And also, we're eliminating the lane that goes into, into the jail, which we've had a couple of issues there, so.
It's not much of a loss with respect to traffic, so.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Look forward to another update.
Good job.
Right. Second, Section 4 is Presentation, Communication Number 16-287. Leslie Clark, Director of Butte Silver Bow Human Resources Department, requesting Council Commissioners authorize a presentation on June 22nd from Mike Young regarding the rate increase on health insurance. Leslie?
Madam Chair, Council, thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Leslie Clark, and I'm the HR Director for Butte Silver Bow. I have with us today Mike Young, who is with Consilium Incorporated, which is a consulting firm that has handled the Butte Silver Bow Health Insurance Program since 1999. So he's got a lot of experience here. What we wanted to discuss this evening is that we are looking at a rather significant increase in our health insurance premium, an overall increase to the plan of about 10.6%. As you are aware, the premium is made up of some different areas that all come together to bring us what we would consider to be our total premium. The first area is the administration fee. We currently contract out with Allegiance Benefit Management out of Missoula, Montana, to provide the administration of our plan. They handle all of the enrollments, the terminations, the COVID notifications, and most importantly, they determine the payment of the claims, and then they make those, that payment. We are pleased to announce that Allegiance will not be, will not be increasing their administration fee this year. The second area that goes into the overall total premium is the consulting fee, and that is built into the premium, and that is what is paid to Mr. Young and his firm to provide us consultation services, and more importantly, to work with the insurance committee to ensure that our claims are being paid properly, and that if employees or their dependents that are covered under the insurance have issues, then he handles those for us in a manner that we don't have to, so that we aren't out of compliance with HIPAA regulations by delving into individuals' health insurance or health status. The third portion of the premium, of course, is the claims themselves. Butte Silver Bow tries to retain a fund of about 1.1 million. Through the last couple of years, we have started to see that 1.1 dwindle somewhat. And so our goal this year is to bring that, that fund back up to that, close to that level anyway. In addition, we will, Michael will be presenting to you, we've had an increased amount of claims this year, especially in the area of large claims, those that are over, I believe, 150,000 or so, 70,000, one of those. And then the fourth component of the premium comes in the form of what's called stop-loss insurance. And that insurance is what you would consider to be like insurance inside the insurance. So if one individual reaches a certain level in their claims, then the stop-loss insurance kicks in and covers the remainder of that claim, so that the overall Butte Silver Bow plan is not responsible for that. It also kicks in if we were to hit, as a group, a certain level of claims, and then the stop-loss would kick in. So it's like an insurance within an insurance to, to protect the Butte Silver Bow Fund itself. So what we're looking at this year is an increase in the stop-loss insurance, which Mike will go into a little bit more detail, as well as an increase so that we can rebuild our claims fund. So I'd like to present Mike Young with Consilium, and he has some information to provide us as to how we've gotten to where we're at today.
Mike, welcome. The floor is yours.
Madam Chairperson, Commissioners, my name is Mike Young. Consilium is my company, and as Leslie said, I've been consulting with you folks since before the turn of the century. You own an insurance company, believe it or not, and the insurance company is the one that provides health insurance for your employees. The, the plan is managed by an insurance committee of employees, participants on the plan, and Brian Sotero is here. Brian is the Vice Chair of the Committee. Annette is also a member of the committee, as is Leslie and several other people. They're the ones that make the, most of the decisions and keep the plan running on solid footing. Leslie's introduction was very thorough and comprehensive. I wanted to reiterate a couple of things. This insurance company that you own pays claims for your staff and their families who incur medical expenses. To protect your interest and to protect that fund, you buy what's called stop-loss insurance. So we pay, when I say we, our fund pays the first $140,000 on a claim, and then an insurance carrier pays the amount above that. So if there's a large claim that exceeds $140,000, somebody else is paying that bill, reimbursing us. And that's important, because things have changed dramatically in the last two or three years in that regard. So let me, so what I want to do is go through a few slides here. One will address the current year, and then we'll talk a little bit about history and go into what's coming toward us next year. If you have questions, feel free to scream at me in the middle. It's fine with me if you interrupt me. So, Annette, first one. Okay. This is, this is this year's claims. These black or blue columns show the monthly funding. So we put in, between you and employees, you put in about $400,000 a month into this insurance company. The green bars are the total expenses. Those are made up of claims and administrative expenses. This is the first 11 months of this year, and you can see nine of the 11 months, we made a profit. Two of the months, we have lost money. This, these claims, when I'm talking about claims costs this evening, I usually will not be talking about the costs associated with Affordable Care Act fees and the care here, which is the employee clinic. Those two things combined add about $300,000 a year to our costs. But, so here you can see, the last month of May, we lost, you can't read those numbers probably, but we lost about $200,000 in May. Up until then, we were doing pretty well. This is not because we've had good claims experience, it's because our stop-loss carrier has paid a lot of our claims. So if we go to the next slide, this is a loss ratio, cost versus funding, and you can see I have several years listed there, and it's an accumulation year-to-date loss ratio. So this loss ratio here at the end of May, 95%. So that means that we have spent 95% of the money we expected to spend, or through May, and 95% of the funds that we have set aside through May to pay claims. So actually, that's not bad. As long as we're under 100%, that means that the plan itself is making a little bit of money. Things, and it's amazing, if you look at this chart, how consistent the years are, except for this one year. See, that year was 2012 to 13. We took a big hit with large claims, but those large claims weren't so high that we had a lot of reimbursements from our carrier. We absorbed a lot of large claims that year, and it really ate into our reserves. Our reserves up until then were, if I remember, close to $2 million, and we're under $1 million right now. So the next slide, this is, this is, goes back to 1999 and shows on, by the end of the year, how much did we end up spending per employee per month? And so back in 1999, when I started, we, we spent $361 per employee per month in the aggregate for claims. Now, that doesn't mean every employee spent 360 and only 360. It means that when you take the total spend for the year and divide it by number of employees, that's what you get. The slope of that line actually is below market. That line from 1999 to present is less than 7% average increase year-to-year, including the big year right there, the 2012 to 13. So, you know, it's a lot of money. We're spending about three, almost three times what we used to spend, but the slope itself is not bad. We actually went for several years in here with no rate increases at all. And then we've had a wild ride here the last three or four years. And that is due almost, well, it is due entirely to large claims. So next slide, this shows, this is a little complicated, but this, this goes back to about 2003, and since 2003, this is our total cost here in claims, that line, 4.5% average increase since 2003. That next line below that, I have a hard time studying this, this line is what I call routine claims. Those are the non-large, those are like, you know, the office visits, claims under $50,000 a year per person. And those claims have actually increased an average of only 1.4%. That's really good. Here's the bad news. These are the large claims. The large claims, claims over 50,000, have an average annual increase of 35%. And as Brian pointed out earlier today, we, you know, our large claims have averaged maybe six to 10 a year historically. Lately, this year, I think we're up almost to 20. So next slide, and this is what, and these don't have diagnoses or anything on them, but I just wanted to give you a list of what, this is this year through May, the large claims. So here's one, the top one, $650,000. We only pay $140,000 of that, but still, we have never seen a claim close to that. And then here's one for 360, and both of those are still growing. Both of those should resolve sometime next year, but they're still in the mix. So we've spent a total of 2.4 million so far, but 858 of that has come back to us as reimbursement from our stop-loss carrier. So our year-to-date net large claims, about 1.5 million, and that's where we were at the end of last year. So about the same as last year. Okay, next. So we have, large claims is a problem. I'm trying to put this in context for you a little bit, because, you know, so we're spending 394. So of the premium, employees pay, and you pay, $400 of that monthly premium goes to those 18 or so large claimants. Last year, it was 361. Year before that, it was 247. So is that high? Is it low? Well, I'm comparing it right here to a group of school districts that I work with up in northwest Montana, and there's 1,100 employees in these. They have had a bad year, and they're spending, bad couple of years, but they spend about $150 a month, and we're spending, you know, three, somewhere between 250 and 400 a month on large claims. So even though they've had a bad year and they're at 150, we're about double that. So next, trying to figure out why. There's, there's three reasons, I think, for that. One is luck, frankly. Large claims are unpredictable in number and size. If anybody could predict the number and size of large claims in any one year, they would be very wealthy, because it's just tough. Actuaries can't figure this out. So we do our best. Second reason is, we, it looks like we're less healthy as a population than the school employees up in the Kalispell and the Flathead area. This is a chart that shows percentage of people that are at high risk based on these biometrics. And by high risk, I mean severely, over, the numbers are severe. They're not just people with, for example, let's just look at that BMI, the Body Mass Index. The schools, 20% of the people are at a high risk for severe illness within the next, probably three years. In our population, 41% are at high risk. Another measure that the medical people find helpful in measuring health is waist size. 25% versus 37% at high risk. This diabetes number, I don't quite trust that one. That just doesn't seem right to me. I think the 1% is low, and I think the 21% might be high. Total cholesterol, we're high. We're the same when it comes to fat, blood fat. But this is an indication that, of a source of our high claims, and it's also a measure of hope, I think. You know, also, as Brian pointed out earlier today, we, Butte Silver Bow has had a history of providing rich benefits for preventive health. And by rich, I mean, we've provided a lot of benefits for people to do preventive health screenings and so forth. Unfortunately, we have a dismal record of people opting to do those things. So this year, when we, or last year, when we started the, joined the state health employee clinic, we encouraged people to go in and do a health risk assessment. And this health risk assessment is based on some body metrics, where we get this data, and also a questionnaire on lifestyle and so forth. So we now have a baseline, and we have data on which individuals, at least among those who participated, which have potential for lowering their long-term health risk. I call this, we have an opportunity to help people improve their, their health and help us lower our long-term costs. So that's what this is about. And the Affordable Care Act actually has, now mandates everybody provide 100% coverage for a certain preventive health. coverage for certain preventive health actions. And so we've adopted that in lieu of our rich benefit. And we're hoping through education and constant reminders that we can get more people, not only to participate in the health risk assessment, but to do something about the results. So next, yes, did you have?
Like, if you want to answer a question now, or?
Yeah, I will.
Well, sure. I think that the state thing is just completely, almost a waste of money. That's my opinion. I've been there a couple of times. And I went too long ago, I couldn't even move with my back. I walk in, I said to the girl, I'm gonna need some help, I don't know what happened. She says, well, you know, you'll have to come back. And it was gonna be seven days. I said, I can't do that. I can't move. You know, I needed some kind of chiropractic care or something. And she had told me that, well, they have to go by appointment and that. So I would think there's other people in my same case that have went there to, and part of that reason was to save money because they jobbed out to, to certain ones that, that bid that price in low, right? That was the, that was the initial.
Part of the services.
Part of the services, right. So I think a lot of people got a little upset with that. And, and I, for one, was quite upset because the time before, it was a throat that I couldn't even bear to swallow and just come on quick. She said, we can't see you right now. So, I mean, what good does that do?
Yeah.
And us paying that kind of money out for that, to actually help this system? And I don't think it is.
Yeah, I, I think that, I'm an analyst, I don't, you know, that's what I like to do. And the jury's out. And we're making a concerted effort through the summer and into, into the fall to really sort out how, whether that is good for us, whether it's saving us money in the long-term or not. This part of it, the health risk assessment part that I just mentioned, you know, we can measure people's health all we want, but unless CareHere and us, we can work together to do something about it, it's a waste of money. Now, on your type of office visit, like you went to, I, the jury's out also on whether that's saving us money. I believe, based on the little bit of data I've seen, that the cost is about the same whether you, you go to like your physician at Mercury Street or wherever, or you go to the state health clinic, the cost to the plan is about the same. Your cost is less going to the clinic because the, the county, the health plan pays the full bill. But, you know, if it's not providing a better access, it's not a lower cost, and if it's not really helping us lower our long-term cost, manage our cost, then it probably isn't the thing for us. And, you know, there's a, there's a place for employer clinics. I'm not saying it's not what we should be doing, but I'm not saying it is something we should continue yet, till we know. But, yeah, your, your frustrations have, there are other people who've had similar frustrations. They, I think the expectations are too high, frankly.
Well, my problem was, you know, what happened to me, just that, that's okay. What I was talking about is the money that's put in to the state program that was supposed to help out and alleviate this so that these rates wouldn't go up and stuff like that. And, and, and I could almost see why it's turned off so much now. And people aren't going there because it, it isn't something. It is if you're looking forward to something down the road, but not if you're, you're sick or something, or something's happening. So.
Yeah.
That's just what I thought I'd throw in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so let's continue the theme of large claims. Leslie mentioned that we buy stop-loss insurance, so that we buy insurance to pay for the very large claims. The blue bar here, in each of these years, is the premium that we've paid to the insurance company for this stop-loss insurance. The orange bars are the amount that they've paid back to us on large claims. So you can see in two thousand ten, eleven, we paid them a hundred and eighty-six thousand, they paid us back a hundred and sixty-three thousand. Probably not good enough for them. They probably didn't make much money on us that year. They certainly didn't make any money on us this year. Ah, finally, they made a little money here, they made some money here. And then two thousand, last year hit, and they lost about seven hundred thousand dollars on us. This year, they've lost about six hundred so far. So they finally realized that maybe they're not charging us enough premium. So here we go, they jacked our premium up to here to, from about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand up to five hundred and fifty thousand, that's our premium. But then they increased our risk or our share of the large claims. So between our increased premium and our share of the large claims, we're now paying up to nine hundred thousand dollars for what we paid two hundred and eighty-eight thousand for last year. So this increase that we're facing is because of this sharp increase primarily, and because we need to restore our reserves to at least a million dollars. And we're, at the end of May, we figured, or at the end of April, we were at eight hundred and forty, I can't remember if this is end of April or May, eight hundred and forty. So we added to our rate, our funding requirements next year, a hundred and sixty thousand to replenish some reserves we lost. So that's the, so this increase is to pay these large claims and pay the premium on our stop-loss and to restore our reserves. And is that the last slide? Yeah. So, any questions? So that's how your, your health insurance company is going.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner Walker?
You know, I have an insurance plan with the school district. And we buy Blue Cross Blue Shield. I don't know if that's set up the same way. Would that be advantageous to us to go out and have an insurance company that pays all the claims where you don't have to be self-funded and then have the stop-loss insurance?
Yeah, we looked at, actually, we go out to bid every three or four years and kind of look at this. Last year, we looked at joining a pool of other cities and counties, MMIA. And they would have charged us an additional nineteen percent over, versus our, I think we ended up with a seven percent. So self-funding is typically the most efficient way to go. But not everybody, you know, it's, it's not everybody's cup of tea because there's, as you can see, there's risk in it. The costs are not known. But I'll tell you, every time I've gone to bid with a client and looked at insurance, full insurance versus self-insurance, self-insurance has worked out to be the more efficient way in the long-term.
More efficient or cheaper?
Well, the administrative costs are lower. So for the, for every dollar you pay, more of that goes to claims and less goes to overhead. That's what I mean by efficient. So, yeah, cheaper.
Because I know, it seems to me that the, the single-person policy for the school district is probably about two hundred and fifty dollars a month less than this.
Yeah.
And that's Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah. So, you know, what are the demographics? What's the claim experience? All of that. It is so hard to just, and what's the plan design, you know? What's the deductible and?
It's a good plan. It's, they call it the Cadillac when we pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Does that, is that two fifty, the total cost, or is that the?
No, no, it's two hundred and fifty dollars less than this proposal you have right now.
But for total funding or just the employee's share?
That's the total funding.
Total funding, yeah, yeah. Last time, we got a bid from Blue Cross, and it's been a few years, it was quite a bit higher.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know, working in the field of, with insurance companies, there, there's other companies that have the wellness benefits programs. And I know we're trying to start one here at Butte Silver Bow, but they seem to be a little bit more aggressive in getting tested and you, you receive a, a premium benefit type of a thing. Have we looked into that? Because I, I see that as a, as a, a reason for, an incentive for one of the employees to actually conduct the test. I mean, I go through and use the assessment test every year. They do blood work. It, it works great, but it doesn't go anywhere for that. So I use it for myself, but I could see more people doing it to get some incentive out of it.
Yeah, we gave people an incentive of fifty or seventy-five dollars for doing it, seventy-five dollars. I have other clients that do an incentive of fifty dollars or a Fitbit. Incentives, no one's really figured out incentives yet. If I had my druthers, I would give a much larger incentive for people who actually do something about their risks and a lesser incentive just to participate. But you gotta get the data, so you need people to participate. But frankly, I don't think anybody's got it figured out.
Follow-up, Commissioner Morgan?
Because I know for me, I mean, I understand our insurance pays for the wellness exam. Didn't know about anything else that you get from it. So it's probably more of a communication thing in lack of my part, understanding the plan. But I mean, I, I think that's one thing that we can do to communicate more with, with the employees.
Yeah, and I know Leslie's, that, that's on her list, is to really do more health promotion, both in well, in the area of wellness and other things connected with this. Definitely.
Sure. Dinette, did you want to comment?
Yes. Madam Chair, Commissioner Morgan, just to add a little bit to that. First of all, tonight, we had a meeting to start to try to educate employees, to further have discussions about our health insurance program, what it's all about, you know, show this slide to them, explain it a little bit in detail. We had two people attend that were not members of the insurance committee. So, and it was publicized, it was given to department heads, it was given to employees, it was emailed, reminders were sent out, you know? So we're trying to do that outreach. Leslie and the HR department held a wellness in May to try to reach employees further with that. I think they had a great showing in May. More to come on that for next year, I think, as more people hear about the wellness fair that was held and, and get more information on it, more people attend it. Lastly, just to comment on incentives, we're not in a position to be giving huge incentives with the fund balance the way it is today. You know, another reason why we, we looked at other insurance companies last year, like Commissioner Walker had stated, and like Mike had, had talked about. But when they look at our loss, stop-loss, and, and what's going on with our large claims, they don't, you know, the, the increase is gonna be so significant to take us on and take on that risk, that the premiums have to be high. The only other way you can offset those premiums to get into a plan like that is to have reserves that, one, pay your claims out from your self-funded plan, and two, to offset those increases by reserve funds so employees aren't getting hit with thirty and forty percent or seventeen to thirty percent increases. And so by trying to be diligent and fiscal about building reserves and trying to slowly add to the reserves and do the best we can fiscally for the plan, we had to do this ten, this ten point six increase.
Follow-up, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up with that, one thing that I think could be a problem is the fact that people take their, their health assessment pretty privately. And they don't want to have to go to a fair to talk about health with other people. Some of the ones that I've seen that have been pretty effective, and I can name company names, but I won't, were ones that it was like an online-type thing. They, they go through, they do a health assessment, they're assigned, I think, a wellness coach. And then from there, they log in and they talk directly to that one person of what they need to change. But they can do it at home, they can do it at work, but it's strictly on the computer, which is what people want nowadays. They don't want that one-on-one because they work with you and, and they don't want you to know their health problems. So something to, to maybe look at. There are firms out there that can, might be able to help you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I?
Dinette, go ahead, sorry.
So just to follow up a little bit on that, I did not participate in this wellness plan. I'm not enrolled in Butte Silver Bow's health insurance. I'm enrolled in another one that I think you're talking about, that, that does do those wellness things. But I believe our plan, they were able to go to the CareHere facility, they had that consultation with the physician, they had their work and assessment completed. It was all confidential, it wasn't public. And then they had to go back for a follow-up visit and see the results before they got their seventy-five dollar reward. So there was a process in place that was private and was offered to, to them to go in a private situation, have one-on-one consultation at CareHere. I think we had seventy-five people participate? Was it seventy-five?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Leslie, you just want to make a comment?
I just wanted to add to that, too. We do have the, the online or the in-person wellness portion of our program through, offered through CareHere. When we offered the wellness fair, we did it in conjunction with our insurance renewal and announcement of the premium increase for this year. Part of the reason we had that was to invite our insurance providers as well as local providers of, you know, fitness clubs, massage therapists, people that could provide services outside of, you know, the medical doctor as well. Mainly to get our insurance providers there, including the EAP, to let people know that the EAP was available to them, to include our flex benefit plans as well as our four fifty-seven deferred compensation plans. So it was kind of promoted as an insurance slash wellness fair in the fact that people could come and learn much more about the benefits that, that are available to them. We found when I started here that a lot of the employees had never even heard of the four fifty-seven plan. So we've been working to put together summary documentation, things like that, that we can give to new employees as they come onboard and to provide information to our current employees. So this is, as though we entitled it as a wellness fair, it was meant to be more of an information in addition to local providers, our insurance providers. The health department was key in presenting a lot of services to our employees in areas of tobacco cessation. They were giving immunizations there. So if you needed a flu shot or pneumonia shot or shingle shot, something like that, they were there to provide that. One area that we did kind of have a downfall on is CareHere was to be there for the wellness fair. And they were going to do some testing for people there, if they wanted their blood pressure, all of that done. Unfortunately, they have the wrong day. So if, when we do this next year, we hope to expand it and to be able to provide more services at that wellness fair with the hopes also that many more people will be attending. So.
Thank you, Leslie. Commissioner Fisher, then Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you. How many employees are enrolled in this group plan?
I believe it's three, between, yeah, I was gonna say around three fifty.
Do we have a breakdown, how many single, how many two-party, how many family?
Not with me today, no. But overall, we have about nine hundred and fifty individuals covered, employees and their dependents.
One other question, please.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
The stop-loss, that's the major issue right here, the stop-loss. Is the stop-loss something that can be shopped? Or, I mean, tell me a little bit more about the stop-loss. You know, the major increase here, I understand, you know, the, you know, we're having major things that we paid thirty-five percent, that's a lot. So the stop-loss, I think, is the issue. I think the wellness thing is, is, as you said, not, not a big issue here. The, the stop-loss and the increase in major illnesses is the problem.
Mr. Young?
Yeah, actually. Yeah, actually, our third-party administrator bids out the stop-loss every year. And usually, in a typical year, they'll have bids from six to eight companies. This year, they had a proposal from one company, and that was the incumbent company. Because we have these two or three large, very large ongoing plans. So it's like, you know, it's like when you're having a bad year, it gets worse. Historically, we've done very well in that regard, but the last couple of years, it's been tough. So, yeah.
No one really wanted us this time.
Nobody wanted us, and, yeah.
It's all sorts of provider back.
Yeah, and, and MMIA last year only wanted us on their terms and not our terms, of course, which was a nineteen percent increase, so, yeah.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
So in other words, if we have a couple, two or three good years here, we could get a lot better rate?
Absolutely.
So that's what we're looking for.
Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like the one weakness in, in this whole thing is, you know, you can buy stop-loss insurance to protect yourself from large claims, but when you start having a rash of large claims, then it's harder to get the stop-loss and you pay for it the next year. If we were insured, you can bet that the insurance company would have recovered those losses probably a year earlier than we had to pay for them, and it would have been even more costly.
Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Fisher scares me. He took the question, I was gonna talk about the stop-loss and ask if it could be shopped out, and you answered that question, but is there any way to negotiate with that company? And if the cutoff is at, say, a hundred and forty thousand now, if you raise it to a hundred and fifty thousand, would this year's increase come down? Is there any negotiation there?
Oh, yeah, actually, I'll, I gave you the simplified version. We actually had Peak, which is our provider network, negotiate with a provider on one of the drugs. We have, we had a person spending about sixty thousand dollars a month on a drug, and they negotiated that down so that it ended up being a sixty-four percent reduction in that. We are actually, we'll actually, retroactive to, back to last September, the total savings to us will be about three hundred thousand dollars. So we went to the stop-loss carrier and said, we just saved you three hundred thousand dollars, can you give us a better deal than you had quoted before? And they come, and this is all through Allegiance, because they're the agent on this. I don't, I don't sell anything. I collect no commissions on anything. Through Allegiance, and they said, well, this kind of case could have a significant relapse next year, so we need to, we, we can't reduce the premium for that. As far as changing the deductible, yes, we did look at changing the deductible, and it's all a, it's all a trade-off. It's all dollar-for-dollar, there's really no way to make it work any better. They did, we, we would have paid a higher premium to have exactly the same coverage we have this year, next year. The premium would have been triple instead of double. But we ended up taking a lower premium in exchange for taking more risk. We did exactly what you're saying. So there is some negotiation on how, on how you structure the deal, but it's really hard to get those guys, especially when it's a sole provider, to give you anything.
Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight. I guess I'm just gonna make a comment, and one maybe I shouldn't, but the reality of this is what you're describing here is something that, whether we like to hear it or not, it's occurring all across the country. I mean, you, you can talk to various private companies, you can talk to public entities, whether it be local governments, university, public school systems, even the Butte School System, whether Commissioner Walker knows or not, they've, they've struggled as well, and they will continue. We'll continue to have these discussions until this country obviously looks at an ultimate solution. I mean, we've had some political debates in this nation about Affordable Care Act and whether it's successful, whether it's not. I think if we have the political will in this nation to, to do something honestly about it, we can do it. And until then, local governments and individual companies and, and individual people out there are gonna struggle with this issue and continue to deal with increasing costs. And I, I say this with, I mean, I realize that it, it's political, but it's a political year, and I think we need to remind everybody that there is a solution, and I'm not gonna say it, and I think you know what it is, and whether you like it or not, every other country, almost industrialized country in the world can deal with it and have solved their problem by this, and they seem to be doing a lot better. And so no disrespect to you or to your consulting business, but this nation needs to deal with this problem firsthand and not kick the can down the road as we've been doing for decades now. So, thank you.
Did you ask me a question? Because I'd love to.
I think it was a comment.
It was a comment, and I'm, I'm not, I, I'm sure you may have an opinion on this, and it's not the time or place, but I, I guess it's frustration. I worked at a company, and the exact same conversation occurred year after year after year. And listening to this conversation, it's like a broken record. And if you pick up the daily newspaper or magazine or turn on nightly news, this is an issue that needs resolved at a nation level, and we don't have the political will, obviously, to deal with it. So, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming tonight, and it was very easily understood.
Thank you.
I know we have a risk management department that's part of Leslie's department, and I, I guess my question is maybe, maybe it's an obvious answer, but work-related injuries, I mean, these are big claims, so I'm, I'm, I don't need to know who they are, what they have, you know, that's causing the large claims, but are injury, are work-related injuries in, included in these large claims?
No, we don't pay for work-related illnesses or injuries.
Strictly medical issues, diseases, and things like that?
Personal.
So there's no way we can cut back on, it has nothing to do with our OSHA or, you know, our risk management or anything like that?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
As you're probably aware, we did hire a new safety coordinator, Tim Wolfe, and his primary direction is to create a safety culture within Butte Silver Bow so that we can also reduce our workers' comp claims, which are extremely high as well.
Okay. Oops. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you. Just real quick, you mentioned that the last year, the premium increase to jump in with the MAIA would have been a nineteen percent increase. What was the amount this year? Was that a consideration this year?
To go to them?
Yes, to pull with them.
No, we didn't look at that this year. It would have been futile.
Okay, there's, so there's no numbers on what the increase would have been there?
No.
I look at the seven percent from last year, in addition to the ten-six this year, and it's really close to that nineteen percent.
Yeah, but remember, if MMIA had taken us a year ago, they would have lost, what, six or seven hundred thousand dollars this year, and you can bet they would have jacked the premiums up to more than cover that.
Oh, I'm sure they would have, but my question is...
But we didn't look, no.
If we were with that larger pool, would that help reduce some of those numbers down? Like the school district, you mentioned the, our number's at four hundred and their number's at a hundred and forty. It would definitely increase theirs, but it would lower ours. Would that help balance everything out or not really?
In the long term, theoretically, yes. I've actually put together a pool, and you don't, you don't underprice the new, the new group coming in. You've gotta charge them full bore, and theoretically, possible, you know, it should level out. But it could, that would, could work against us as well. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we appreciate the presentation and...
Thank you.
Better things in the future, my goodness. Section five, Communication number sixteen dash one-five-one, Sheriff Ed Lester, Butte Silver Bow Law Enforcement Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize Chief Executive to sign contract with CCCS to transport youths to the detention center. I talked to Sheriff Lester today, and he is still awaiting the information in order to move this forward, so we will continue to hold that in advance. Section six, Communication number sixteen dash one-eight-five, Carl Hafer, sixty-fifty Porter, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners and the Chief Executive to address reasoning with regard to Grove Creek contamination and future plans. I have been in contact with Mr. Hafer, and I know that the Chief Executive's administrative assistant has as well, and with Mr. Muller, and Mr. Muller is drafting a letter. He's still having something vetted before he does so, so we'll continue to hold this in advance until we receive that letter. And Mr. Hafer's, he is willing to wait to do that as well. So, section seven, Communication number sixteen dash two-three-two, Mick Dennehy, nineteen oh one Garrison Avenue, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize purchase of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. We did receive a letter from Lori Casey from the Planning Department last week asking us to, to place this on file because the process that this gentleman has to go through is different than the standard adjacent landowner policy. It's gonna have to go through a petition, which is to vacate an alley. And I don't know, would belabor any explanation on that, but with that, I would just entertain a motion to cross-reference this and place it on file.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we cross-reference Communication sixteen dash two-three-two with Communication number sixteen dash two-six-nine and place this communication on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference Communication sixteen dash two-three-two with sixteen dash two-six-nine and place this on file. Is there anything on the question? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, Communication number sixteen dash two-three-six, Bill Maloney, three fifty-eight East Mercury Street, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the purchase of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. We again received a, a letter of reference to this from the Planning Department with a recommendation, and they did recommend that we proceed with the request to authorize this gentleman to purchase this county-owned property, and, and we can hold this in the committee of the whole pending the resolution. So with that, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we cross-reference Communication sixteen dash two-three-six with Communication sixteen dash two-seven-zero and hold this communication in the committee of the whole pending the introduction of a resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference sixteen dash two-six, two-three-six with Communication sixteen dash two-seven-zero and hold this in the committee of the whole. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section nine, Communication number sixteen dash two-four-eight, Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a public hearing this evening regarding developers' packet proposals for three county-owned properties. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lori Casey did such a great job on this today.
Lori with a D.
I'll make a motion that we place Communication sixteen dash two-four-eight on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication sixteen dash two-four-eight on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section ten, Communication number sixteen dash two-six-one, Karen Burns, Director, Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a community development block grant, CDBG, community needs public hearing on June twenty-second. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we place Communication sixteen dash two-six-one on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place sixteen dash two-six-one on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section eleven, Communication number sixteen dash two-six-seven, Danette Elglieson, Director, Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department, requesting Council of Commissioners approve referral of the fiscal year twenty-seventeen preliminary budget to the Finance and Budget Committee for consideration at the July sixth, two thousand and sixteen meeting, and to the Committee of the Whole for consideration the following meeting on July thirteenth, and we will hold that in advance to complete those requests. Section twelve, Communication sixteen dash two-six-eight, Danette Elglieson, Director, Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a presentation on July thirteenth, twenty sixteen, on the fiscal year twenty-seventeen preliminary budget. We will hold that in advance until that date. Section thirteen, Communication number sixteen dash two-eight-three, Pat Holland, Manager, Butte Silver Bow Government Buildings, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a presentation on June twenty-second this evening regarding the Courthouse West retaining wall and driveway restorations. Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we place Communication sixteen dash two-eight-three on file.
Executive.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication sixteen dash two-eight-three on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section fourteen, Communication number sixteen dash two-eight-five, Karen Burns, Director, Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a public hearing on July sixth, twenty sixteen, to receive comment on a proposed five-year tax abatement for the Copper King Inn renovation project. We will hold that in advance until that date. At this point in the meeting, I would call for any public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none? Anything else to come before us this evening? We have no meeting next week, so we do have a Finance and Budget meeting, though that will be, I believe, five-thirty next week in this, in the council chambers. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion re-adjourn.
It's complicated. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Can I get my pictures?